Okay, I'm gonna call this regular city commission meeting to order on June 16th at 7:00 PM. I'd like you all please rise for Reverend Wilson, he's gonna lead us in prayer and immediately afterward we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for today, want to thank you for the opportunity to gather here together. Pray, Father, as each of us recognizes Father's Day as it's coming up, pray, Father, that each of us would continue to remember the influences, the fatherly figures, and honor them at this time. We ask, Lord, your wisdom and your words be given at this meeting, and that everything would continue to work together to help this city be the very best that it can be. In your name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
President.
Here.
Commissioner Love.
Here.
Commissioner Malley.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Senator Love.
Here.
Communications 4A, we got a letter from the Council on Aging thanking us for the contribution to them. Somebody wanna make a motion to accept the file?
Make a motion to accept communications and place on file.
Support. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It has been so filed. We're now at the public comment portion of the meeting. You're welcome to come to podium and address the commission. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to under five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Louise Gutell. I live at 535 North Main. I'm here as a representative of the Historical Commission of Marine City. We have the Gingerbread Grant Program and the Paint the Town Program. It is beginning now, we're taking applications. Those of you who get the voice have already gotten one of these flyers delivered with your paper. If you haven't gotten an application, you can get them at Lumberjack. The Gingerbread Grant Program will give up to $1,000 to add to new architectural elements to your home and to add gingerbread decorations. For instance, the Victorian houses have the wooden decorations on the front. Sometimes, some of the older homes have a few of them and you don't have the rest of them. This grant would help pay for that. And other architectural improvements on your home that would make it look more period effective. The Paint the Town Program will match up to $500 worth of paint or materials. You simply fill out the application, turn it in. Applications are reviewed on a first-come, first basis, and they close as of September 1st. So if you're interested, please think about it. $500 is not a lot of money, but it can be really helpful. You can match the money yourself by either doing the work or by getting additional paint or whatever that you're using for the project. If you have further questions about this, you can call Cheryl Zimmer. Her telephone number is 765-5622. And the Historical Society, I think people think you know only of old, old buildings. You don't have to have something on an historic register. It's for your houses here in Marine City to make them look better, to make you feel better. And remember, each thing that we do now becomes a part of our history and the future. Thanks.
Do we have anyone else? Coes?
Gary Coes, 430 Water Street. The Mariner began this thing called Matching Funds, or a private initiative with the Tree Program, and it's underway, which is really great. And then we did, we went with the beach thing. I'm supposed to give you the beach update tonight. As of this evening, we've raised somewhere between $35,000 and $36,000. The final tally will be in on the 20th when the Petronosity Program ends. The, all but two buckets have been collected, and there was about $2,600 total between all those buckets. So the bottom line is, it's gonna be closer to $36,000 than $35,000. And that will be posted on the website here on the 20th, I guess. So that's just the update there, and apparently the beach thing is running very smoothly, and everybody's happy, and we haven't seen any complaints, so that's good. Having said that, we were getting bored again, so we decided to do something again. We, you know, have problems coming up with ideas, and then we have to do them. So, we're gonna tease you tonight, because when we make the formal announcement, you guys are gonna be at the beach somewhere in two weeks and not working while we're working. So therefore, we'll tease you tonight and tell you that on October 15th and 16th, we're gonna have the First Annual Popcorn and Pumpkin Festival in Marine City. And as we speak, and Mr. Vandabush is here tonight, we are growing two acres of popcorn at the Vandabush Farms, and they will be planting the pumpkins for the festival. Now, the important news is, we plan to set two Guinness World Records, one each day during this festival. And we're already approved by Guinness, and we anticipate bringing more people to Marine City than have ever been here in history. So we're working out parking details and all sorts of issues in that regard, and when you come back from vacation, we'll be prepared to present it to the commission. So with that, I'll just leave that teaser with you and return to my seat. Thank you. Oh, one other. Sorry, sorry, I still got time. Monday, we launch our Get Out to Vote Initiative with the RISA and the Challenge for the Future. Two teachers, 10 kids, will be mentoring, and we're charging them with the responsibility to put together the marketing plan with our help to get out the vote, because not only do we plan to get two world records, we plan to get a state record for the highest voter turnout of any city in Michigan this November. And we will do that. So that's it. I'm leaving. Bye.
Erin Deitch, 323 North William. I just wanted to come up and let everybody know that there was a mistake yesterday in the Voice newspaper regarding the beach fundraiser. It stated that there was going to be money being used for lifeguards. That is incorrect information. There will not be lifeguards, we cannot do that. We have the attendance, so I just wanted everyone to know that that is the error. There will not be lifeguards.
Bill Haas, 203 Pleasant Street. Alright, just, I don't know, last Sunday, Monday, put out something there for homeowner association-type deal. Had a couple people interested. One person showed up, you know, they were kinda worried about it ratting out on the neighborhood. If you're ratting out dope house, it ain't gonna do nothing but make your neighborhood better. Like I say, you got more legs to stand down. If you notice something, it holds somebody else. You know, don't take a rocket scientist to see 15 cars just showed up. Everybody spent five minutes and got the hell out of there. Alright, also, while we were talking, Tiffa, because, you know, again, I was, on Facebook this week, I was associated with the Rich River Boys, because I'm the long-term homeowner bitching about the low-income families. I ain't bitching about low-income families, I'm bitching about the people who are renting properties for a living, and, you know, having somebody pay their note, not being up to code with the sidewalk. You know, they wanna say, "People can't afford the sidewalks." So if we use Tiffa, have them put aside some money for low-interest loans for these people, and then if we go after the rental properties first, that gives everybody else a chance to figure out how to budget for this thing. I mean, because Tiffa, when you're buying four-wheelers and, you know, donations to the maritime days, I don't think that classifies. Maybe I'm wrong. It's not the way I understood how it goes, I'm not a, you know, could care less either way. Like I said, I'm on the compromise, man. You guys should use me while you got the opportunity. I came in the other day about the tree that fell across the street from Mr. Avery's house there. Have you been noticing that truck been parking underneath that tree waiting for the rest of it to fall? So I don't know if the city, you know, it's on the private property, you know, it's the one with the major sidewalk problem, but, you know, better find out who it is. It falls down on somebody's, somebody's, you know, no parking sign, whatever. But he's just waiting to collect some money from somebody. Or if the kid's standing under the deal playing in the street, and the wind blows and falls down, now you just killed the kid. But I don't know, there's, you know, a lot of things, you know, talking about the blight, the different issues. Last time I went off the deep end here, you know, Mr. Malley, you were kinda late. I had kinda called you out. You know, I realize you're a busy man and all that kinda good stuff, you know, I hate to call you out because you're a for-the-people kinda guy, but how can we go after homeowners and stuff? I mean, you need help cleaning your yard, moving some stuff out. You know, you're somebody in the city, you know? Like I said, I hate to call you out, my man. If you took a two-year break, got your stuff straightened around, then come on back. But like I say, it's hard for a city to go after a bunch of other problems when one of our leaders, you know what I mean? I mean, like I could tell you people from a year ago, town's only so big. Well, you got 12 blocks by 23 blocks or something like that, it's not very big. But, you know, like I say, truck and trailer, I can help you out. But, you know, like I say, it's hard to go after people when you got the tree issue, Tiffa money being used for low-income loans. Like I say, you hit the rental properties first, that gives the homeowners, because like Mayor said last week, if you're a homeowner, you got certain responsibilities. You know, if you didn't want the sidewalk, you shouldn't have bought the house with the sidewalk. You know, like my street, Pleasant Street, from my corner, 1, 2, 3, 4, about 5, 6 houses down. We all did it, we got the break when we paid a third or two-thirds, or however that operation worked back in the day. Well, now you cross the street with rental properties, and you look down that side of the street in the corner, like I said, you got a corner property there. You know, there is no handicap access in my neighborhood going to the cemetery in the back way. But like I say, things to be done, you guys, you know I can be mean.
Do we have anyone else?
Good evening, Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. I waited until Bill went up, because I wanted to welcome him to the Rich River Boys Club. I think he'll be a very welcome member. All governments have problems with transparency, and Marine City's no exception. Not that there's anything to hide, but people need to have avenues of information and contact, even if they don't make use of those avenues to be informed. Making these meetings available for people to view and to review is an important service that the city provides. And although I agree that the current financial state of the city indicates that we can't sustain our current situation, we need to find ways to continue to provide this service. Social media, whether we like it or not, is a fact of society, and it's a fact of life, and it's the way we communicate now and disseminate information. Whether you're a fan of Facebook or not, the city has to embrace this. Not only to make information available, but to monitor the information and the conversations that are put forth on these channels. Not to do so leaves too much bad information or disinformation out there to misinform or confuse our population. For example, a recent post claiming that the money spent for grant writing could have been better spent for lifeguards is disinformation. Whether the amount in question was $6 or $60,000, the issue is not the amount of the money, but the fact that that money being from Tiffa could not be spent for lifeguards, even if we had chosen to do so. Not to correct, this leaves people with the false impression that we didn't do something that they wanted us to do, because, who knows? Another example is the lengthy examination of the huge amount of tax money that the city is losing by granting a 12-year tax abatement to the Inn on Water Street. It needs to be addressed again that either through ignorance or deliberate disinformation, this is false information being presented to the public. Left as it is, the property on the corner there would probably sit there for years because of the cost of the cleanup involved in order to build at that site, which means the city would gain no further income from that piece of property than they're getting now. With the advent of the Inn, the city actually gains tax money short-term because of the four condominiums involved in the construction of the Inn. The overall future tax benefit to the city will be very large, not to mention the influence of the Inn on the city in the short term in terms of bringing people to our town. My thanks to Commissioner Avery, who beat me to the punch by pointing out that the misinformation presented by one of the presenters here, that we were living under a situation of taxation without representation, presented to his elected officials, is another example of the type of disinformation and misinformation that's out there. It's important for the city to respond to this information, this misinformation put forth, lest that information obtain the patina of truth. The people of Marine City need to be continually informed and reminded that this administration is doing an honest job, they're doing an excellent job, and that the information they receive about the state of and the business of the city is factual and complete. And you guys need to make sure that that information stays that way. There are no conspiracies afoot or good old boyism going on here. This is a straightforward, very businesslike, very honest group of people doing the best they can to administer our city. That said, Marine City needs to wake up to the fact and to understand that they have exactly the kind of city that they want. The city that they're willing to work for and vote for. If you think something needs to be done, step up, speak up, offer solutions, roll up your sleeves. We've seen the huge positive impact of that in the recent weeks. If you wanna whine, go to the Blue Pike. Okay. People need to step up in this city. If you're not registered to vote, get registered and vote. If you don't vote, you have exactly the kind of city that somebody else voted for. Thank you.
Keith Jenkin, 809 Water Street. I just got a quick question. I'm looking at your agenda, new business, you have waived permit fees on electrical work and under that waiver, permit fees on library gazebo. Are we gonna be talking about ZBA application fees tonight? Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd say none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the amendment agenda?
Oh, we're gonna add this.
No. Sorry, I forgot to add, make a motion to add the waiver for the ZBA fees for the Beach Pavilion Project.
We gotta add all the stuff in yellow, there's several.
And, oh, I thought we were just gonna amend that. Okay, so there's a 88E, special event praise in the park, to also add a board appointment, Linda Gabler to the Planning Commission appointment, and 10I, which is waived permit fees for the Beach Pavilion Project, and 11F, which is a resolution 0252016 for the budget.
Motion support. Any discussion on these amendments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's been approved, thank you. Moving on to item 7A, which is City Commission Regular Minutes for June 2nd, 2016.
Make a motion to approve the City Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of June 2nd, 2016.
Support. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Initiative been approved. Moving on to item 8, which is the consent agenda. We have item 8A, which is departmental activity reports, item 8B, which is Marine City Fire Authority Run Report, item 8C, it's a business license for Earth Star Wisdom, they have a new owner. Item 8D, business license for Meriman?
Miriam.
Miriam. Pizza. Doing business is Dolly's Pizza, new owner. And we've got item 8E, which is special event praise in the park.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Place on file.
Motion to support. Any discussion on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda's been approved. Moving on to item 9A, unfinished business, Tetra Tech contract. We've got the contract back like we asked for, with showing the adjustment for, if we're willing to pick up the billing out of the office. And now that you're here, is there any problem with us doing it?
No, basically, I did it before, because when I'm here, whenever you saw the accounts payable, Tetra Tech, we were reimbursing them, but it would show all the bills that they would now pay the vendor versus Tetra Tech. And it gets more controls where, I mean, Mike actually does review the bills, but he's he'll get the authorization to purchase these items before they're even purchased, because we get a Tetra Tech.
I make a motion that we approve the contract for Tetra Tech as presented.
Motion support. Any other discussion on this contract?
Well, just thank Mr. Kinsley and Representative Tetra Tech for, you know, taking the, giving us the opportunity to bring the bill down a little bit.
I appreciate that, it was something that was out there, and we talked about it internally, and then with Mary Ellen and that, it was, it's the right thing to do, because it could avoid some other errors, too. Because we're getting some invoices, and there'd be tax on them, and we don't pay tax, you guys don't. So if anything, that's gonna streamline it better, and Mary Ellen has great control of that. So investment for the city is the right thing to do.
Forward, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Anyone else? We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Love.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Senator Love.
Yes.
Moving on to item 9B, which is DPW roof. Guess we ran into some rotted sheeting, and they had to be replaced, and an extra $600 on the contract.
Make a motion to approve the contract for the roof at the DPW.
Any other discussion on this? Commissioner Avery?
I think realistically, anybody who has ever replaced a roof knows that you can't look through and see everything, and this is reasonable. This is just something that you expect when you tear into the subject, so.
Damage described here, that's really reasonable.
Yes, material alone.
Commissioner Simpson?
I just, you know, it illustrates one of the things that a lot of us have been saying along, is the longer you defer maintenance, the more of these types of charges and, you know, additional damages that we're gonna kinda come across. So, you know, as we see this right in front of us, I think that bears mentioning, you know, right here alone, you know, the longer you defer, the more issues you're gonna have. So I'm glad it was caught, you know, that's a pretty reasonable amount, you know. Anyone that follows lumber prices or anything alone, you know, that just skyrockets, and, you know, that's very reasonable.
Else? Alright, another roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Love.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Senator Love.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Moving on to new business, we got item 10A, Channel 6 Discussion.
C?
9C? Sorry. I'm just getting excited, because it's actually moving along here. Item 9C, Adoption of Ordinance Number 2016-3, Pedestrians Right-Away.
I make a motion that we approve the Adoption of Ordinance Number 2016-03, Pedestrians Right-Away.
Motion to support. Any questions or discussion on this?
There was a question posed at the first reading about a type of penalties for not following the guidelines and ordinance. In some of the other sections in the Traffic and Motor Vehicles Chapter, there is a penalty that reads, "A person who violates this section shall be responsible for municipal civil infraction and shall be subject to the penalty provisions of Section 10.99 of the Code." I did have some correspondence from Jim Downey regarding this. He said that it wouldn't hurt to add that, it's unobjectable. The only issue that he took with it is that he didn't necessarily think it would be something an officer would issue a ticket for, but that's something for you guys to consider, if you'd like to add that, we can add that as it be 70.002D. If you wanna add the penalty portion to this.
Penalty wouldn't happen.
Nothing.
So then what's the point?
Yeah.
I know you put this together, what was the reasoning?
The reasoning is, you know, and I agree, the concept of penalties, I thought maybe that would, I guess I'm not that knowledgeable about the ordinances. I thought an ordinance would be covered by a penalty somewhere. But we are respectful of people crossing at crossings, and I drive among the community, I walk the community, the children are walking the community. You can't walk across the street, Parker Street, cars will not stop for you. Maybe a few here and there, but I have stopped, and people go right on by me. And we need to have these enforced, we need to have them striped well, we need to acknowledge that if the pedestrian is stepping out into the right-of-way, that they have that right-of-way, and the cars must stop. I think it's for safety. I think we're very lucky that no one has been hurt. And I think we need to look at other areas of putting crossings. If I wanna walk, for example, if I wanna walk to church, there is, from my house to Holy Cross, there is no place for me to cross with a signage until I get down to Water Street. And, you know, if I wanted to go across for anything, so if I wanted to go to St. Martin's, for example, if I wanted to get across, I wanted to go visit Lisa, for example, I can't get across the street, the traffic is terrible, and that's just me. And I'm an adult and can handle it, but, you know, I'm concerned about the elderly and the children in our community, their safety.
You know, this is one of the few things that we can do to address Parker Street. You know, the city, over a number of years, has petitioned the state to allow us to put in, you know, an additional sign or a stoplight that's operating during school hours and those types of things, and we've been declined every time. And their rationale is that it's, the traffic doesn't justify it, so this is, you know, an attempt to do what little that we can do by the law to help, at least encourage that or help address that problem that's existed for a long, long time. So the Safe Routes to Schools has identified that as, you know, as a dangerous crossing. I know there's other studies five or six years ago that identified it as one of the more hazardous portions of the city right there for pedestrians to cross.
Okay, we used to have a light there a long time ago, and they took it out because of...
Yeah, and then won't let us put it back.
Yeah.
Frustrating.
And I know we used to even have crossing guards there at one time, they did that for a while. They did that for a while. It's probably the biggest thing. Most of the other places that I walk, if a car comes up, most of the time, they're pretty good about it. I haven't really had too much trouble where somebody hasn't stopped to let me go through first, even if there's no crosswalk painted, but not a problem. I'm just concerned if we don't have any penalty, then, you know...
Can I send my motion then until we add that? Provision to this? I thought we wrote that...
Or do we have to redo it?
Yeah, since this is the first reading, are you sure? It doesn't have to be a...
This is not the first reading.
It's not, this is the adoption.
This is the adoption.
So we'd have to start over, which isn't a problem. We want to do it right, I would think.
Right.
So why don't we just do it right?
Commissioner Avery?
We used some wording on amending something that we approved from the lawyer last time that indicated a change could be made after approval that...
But that would be if it didn't change the intent of this. This would actually add something. So I would argue that would change the intent, add more.
I guess I would make a motion to table this till the next meeting or until it can be updated and then brought back. How's that?
That's a better...
Yeah, I think, you know, to have an ordinance like this without any teeth is...
We also want to make it as enforceable as possible for those that have to enforce that. Better job, we can do it right in these things if it makes it more clear for them to be able to enforce that, that's just a better system all around.
Right. But just the fact that the ordinance is in place, you know, isn't going to inform every driver coming through town. So that's, I mean, you almost have to do those crosswalk sign, you know, signage, you know, what they put in the middle of the street, something like that too, to go along with it, to make it actually work. Anyone else on this one? All in favor of tabling?
Add your support.
There is support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's been tabled. Now we're moving on to item 10A, which is Channel 6 discussion. Somebody want to lead us off on it?
Sure. I think I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Dingelman and have some discussions and also received emails and I'm sure some of the other commissioners have and talked with people. But the basic concept is that this is a community television agreement. We've already gotten a 50% discount last year or, you know, cut the price in half. That's from a franchise fee from those who have Comcast Television. And I feel that they basically have a right to see some of that money go into having the service available to them. You know, Channel 6 is available to those who have Comcast. And I know a great number of the elderly who can't get out to these meetings and, you know, do watch Channel 6 and watch commission meetings and comment to us on, you know, what they've heard and seen on the commission meeting. And then secondly, it's a community service. If we were to disband our participation in this service, other smaller communities would probably follow likewise and we would not have this. You know, we say, well, you know, the schools get it anyway, but the school's not going to be able to support this whole process, the cost of the Channel 6 themselves either. So, you know, we begin to lose out all around. So, you know, I know that we are looking for money, I know that money is important, but I think we owe this service to the community.
Commissioner Hunter?
I'm going to agree because back in the day, I know Paul remembers back in the day, in 95 was when we started. Marine City was the first one to put their meetings on the air. I started doing them back then when Channel 6 first came out. That's before Paul got it all started. And I did it for a couple of years until he took over because the commission wanted one person to start doing it. Then we branched out to the school board. But Paul does more than that. He does the bulletin board, he does the focus stuff, he does the parades. We worked on the parades in a couple of times too. So it's one of those things that's been a big benefit to the community. Even if you don't have Channel 6, you can see it on ctv.com. So there is another avenue in case you don't have cable. But it's been a very, very good positive thing for this community that keeps people up to date on what's going on. And I don't know, Philip, is it Alexiak?
Alexiak.
Alexiak? Okay, sorry, Philip. He sent this stuff to us and he, and I know he wrote a big long one, but he asked if I could at least read the points. He's got several points that he wanted to make. He used to work with Paul doing this stuff. So he wanted to make some highlights for everybody, so he wrote a letter, which I want to put as part of the record for him. And then he says, "Highlights for Commissioners." He says, "Money to support Marine City programming and Channel 6 does not come out of the general fund. It's an annual franchise fee currently in the amount of approximately $60,000, in which $30,000 is kept by Marine City and 30 is given to the City of St. Clair, then it gives to Channel 6 for Marine City programming. A copy of this agreement can be found at the Marine City City Hall. The franchise agreement with the state can be found at Cable Channel 6 St. Clair. The $60,000 amounts to the franchise fee is paid for by the cable subscriber. Every Comcast subscriber in the area pays a franchise fee. It is at a rate of 5% of gross. These collected fees are what is turned into the city and Marine City at the annual due date for the franchise fee that Comcast pays. Channel 6 provides numerous opportunities for people to volunteer at the station. They also provide an enriched and mentoring learning environment for people to learn the basics of television production while serving their community. If you see a technical glitch such as a bad picture or little or no audio, call the station at 810-329-5297. The issue may not originate from Channel 6 station as it goes through a head end in New Haven, Michigan before being transmitted out to cable subscribers. For anyone that is looking for more detail, please see the letter attached and with this that discuss Channel 6 in more depth, which provides a lot of information and I'll give that to you." But he worked with Paul and he got into the business because of working with him. So, I mean, it has a very big impact at the local community.
Yeah, I would agree with the comments made so far. You know, as I've said before, and I try to speak whenever CTV is mentioned, it's really more of an enterprise. Some people like to quantify it with, "This is what we get per meeting," but it goes much, much further than that. So I think it's unfair when you read somewhere that says, you know, "It costs this much to broadcast a meeting." It's not that. It's how the whole enterprise works together. You know, we, well, when I was producing the music festival, we were on there several times and when we had the Detroit Symphony Orchestra concerts, at both events every year, we would put out a questionnaire, "How, where'd you hear about us?" And overwhelmingly, the top two responses were CTV and articles in the paper. And so that it's, if you just look at this past month, I think Marine City's had over six or seven different opportunities on there. There's, you know, the beach fundraiser, there's folks on there, the Snug and Riverbank Theater, about the Life Rings and just any number of things. So I'm wholeheartedly in support of maintaining CTV. And I just want to remind all of us that, you know, when we passed our budget and we voted on it, it included this funding for CTV. So it's in place for future years. And I would go further saying that if we ever thought that we might want to change that, that we should be the ones driving the bus on that. We should, just like any other service to the city, that we would bid that out. But part and parcel to doing that would be us generating a request for proposal on that. You know, you can have any fly-by-night person come with a camera or something like that, but I think in order to make any changes, that we want to make sure that we're dictating what we want out of that. I've known Paul for, you know, almost 14 years now. I've worked with him with the school district in other capacities. I've seen what he's done here. You know, there's a lot of opportunities here. You know, I don't think at any point Paul has ever turned us down for anything. We've asked for additional coverage, you know. I know some people on the music festival and other groups have called him severely last minute and he'll lengthen the focus program to include people. So I, you know, I think he's worked very well with us and the staff at CTV has worked very well with us. And I would just, would like to continue that relationship. And if, you know, people are feeling we're not getting what we want out of there, I would think that the appropriate approach would be to approach CTV and say, "We're looking to do X, Y, Z," whatever that might be. I don't know. But I had a lot of people contact me once this was brought up and by far, people were very much in favor of viewing the meetings, you know. Some people say, "Yeah, the meetings are online," but a lot of people don't fare well with the internet and they prefer to watch it, you know, when it's nice, neat and tidy on Channel 6. And beyond that, I do philosophically would ultimately have a problem with discontinuation of any funding to CTV because of those franchise fees. You know, I feel like, you know, it's not a direct tax, but indirectly, you know, those individuals, myself included, who pay for Comcast, you know, are paying for that. So if we absorb those monies, that's something that they're not, you know, receiving what they're paying for, in my mind. And I think, you know, there's certainly many ways to juggle that. You know, if we, if we found that next year we're, which we are and still in a similar financial situation, I would hope that we would approach CTV with alternatives, if that's the direction we're looking to do and see what they might be able to offer us well in advance of our budget workshops. You know, I would hate to have something come down to last minute and, you know, I want to be able to further that relationship and really work with them to see what we might be able to achieve as opposed to disbanding it or cutting it up in any way, shape or form.
Commissioner Malley?
Yes. One thing I do want to add to it, above all, is showing us we have transparency. And to me, running a city, having a telecast is very important. Sometimes it's hard for me to get here at 7:00, but, that's a joke. But still, the idea is showing transparency and it's bringing to the community as an outlook. And I'm totally grateful that you do have it online. So that way, the other franchise sees if you didn't have Comcast, you're still able to see the city meetings. It was a very good move on you guys. But something just for thought, if any other, the other cable companies, if they wanted to buy that channel off, to buy a franchise fee off you, can you offer that to them or is just for Comcast only? Say, okay, say if you don't have Comcast, say you got AT&amp;T or different...
The only provider that has a franchise with the city of Marine City is Comcast. That's the only provider that is allowed to provide cable to the city.
Well, I was just saying, if you sold your rights to another company or you couldn't do that, then...
There are no other companies to sell to. They would have to have an existing contract. Like if you go to...
Well, I'm thinking, say if somebody's got...
You know, like Wide Open West and other ones, they have existing contracts with this, with those municipalities as well. We don't have that in our city.
Okay. Well, I just, say if somebody didn't have Comcast and they had a different provider, that's all I was saying, if that was open. But above all, more than anything, is just a delight that we're showing transparency and it's very important and it's a very good insight to our city. And people see visual. It's one thing to listen, but they see visual that makes a friendlier community. And to me, it would be a mistake if we did away with it. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn? Everybody have their say? I don't, frankly, at the last meeting, like I said, I realized I have absolutely no support, so I'm not even quite sure why this is on the agenda. But I'm, so I'm just going to explain my position and why I said what I said, just so everybody knows I'm not just coming off, you know, just out there in the middle space. I don't disagree that it's good to have the meetings on TV. I mean, I'm all for transparency and I do realize that it probably serves the elderly community better than most. But we have a budget where we don't have enough money and the taxpayers have said that we can't have any more taxes. These franchise fees are not optional. Nobody ever asked me if I wanted to pay for it. And I've never seen a lot of people telling me that they wanted to go to TV, but a lot of people told me they want their taxes low. So that's one of my points. World's changed a lot since 1995. There's a lot more opportunities to put these things on, different, through different media, through the internet. Even a lot of seniors are savvy with the internet. I know my 89-year-old mother was on the internet all the time, so that's one point. The main problem is we have to start putting money away for capital improvements, which we are not doing right now. And the only way to do that is to cut an expense that's a reoccurring expense. Since over the five years that I've been on this board, we've spent $270,000 toward Channel 6. I'd argue that the police department also is a very critical benefit to the community as far as safety goes. I'd argue way more than this Channel 6. But we cut that several years ago without any discussion at all. So when you don't have enough money and you need to cut reoccurring expenses, you have to look at things that aren't absolutely necessary and that aren't vital. And that's where we're getting down to. We can only provide what is absolutely necessary. So when you look at the budget and what's there, there's only a couple of things left on the budget that we don't have to provide. And we don't have to provide televised meetings. And yes, it's true, I do think that it's a lot of money to spend for the product that we get. So that is why I made that recommendation. Nothing against Mr. Dingelman or Channel 6. I'm not trying to hide anything from the community. I'm just trying to find a way to start applying, you know, some money toward capital expenses that we could use to fix roads, buy equipment, maintain buildings. Right now, we can't do that stuff because we're not putting the money away. So that was my position. But like I said, I could see I'm a Lone Ranger on this one, so we'll just let it, I'm not going to make a motion. I doubt anybody else will, so if we've had enough discussion on this, we can move on. All right.
So in other words, Channel 6 stays as it is?
Well, unless somebody wants to make a motion to change that.
I just wanted to make that statement to...
Right.
... the one who's left wondering.
Right. Commissioner Avery?
Based on what you've said and where we are right now, there's no support to change that. However, if we can put this out prior to the budget meeting, this and other things, not just this, but try to get the citizens involved on what do they want to spend money on? Do we want to fix sidewalks? Do we want to do any of the roadwork? Do we really need televised meetings so that we could make a decision prior to getting right at the budget and then have to face a vote right there?
There was some discussion on that actually during the meeting.
Well, yes.
But we didn't ever move in that direction at all, so the discussion was limited, I agree. And, you know, I'm just trying to look down the road. I'm tired of kicking the can. I know a lot of you are tired of kicking the can too. That's why we did the PA 33 in the first place. We just, and this budget's just kicking the can again because we're not, we're not taking care of the future. And I know you've said that budget's not sustainable, so we have to find somewhere to cut. So, yeah, whoever's here sitting on these chairs next year, you know, maybe they'll talk about some more, but I'm willing just to let it go for now. I'm not going to kick a dead horse or, you know, I'm not Don Cohote here. So if that's enough, we can move on to the next one. Moving on to item 10B, which is Recreation Department Discussion. And we can, I can make the same statement if you want to save some time. I realize I'm out there alone on this one too. So unless you want to really get into it, I mean, I'm not, I don't really have much to say about it. Does anybody want to make any comments on the...
I'll make a comment. I think a recreation department is important to a community. But I think we really need to look more closely at our recreation and what we're doing when more than 75, more than 75% of the people that are participating are from out of the city. That's wonderful and I don't, you know, want to deny them that, but there's something that we've got to look at, at least in the future, or begin studying now. What are we going to do about this? You know, it's, a lot of things are offered by the East China School District. You know, we have 80% non-residents, 74% non-resident, 67% non-resident. And all of these, you have two residents in the program. You have five residents in the program. We have creative kids. Some of this is self-supporting, you know, that's great. But again, we're looking at ways to cut expenses and, you know, Lynn does a great But, again, we're looking at ways to cut expenses, and, you know, Lynn does a great job with the little bit that she has. It's not her fault that, you know, the residents aren't, maybe the residents don't need it, you know? It's like, you know? I think down the road, we need to thoroughly look at what we're doing with the Recreation Department.
I'll just, you know, say that I'll take the blame for this discussion, because if I felt this way, I should have made more of a point during the budget workshops, and I'd bring it up after, at the final approval was probably not the best thing to do, but it's just something that was weighing heavily on my mind, so I just wanted to see if anyone else felt the same way I did. I learned that no one else did, so.
Lynn, would you be willing to answer a few questions?
Sure.
Okay. Step up. So, we're kind of in a catch-22. You've got more than, well, I forgot what the percentage was, but you've got, majority of the participants are from outside the city. You've got programs that, I don't know, if you raise the rates to support the program, you're going to lose even more people, right?
In some cases.
In some cases, okay.
I bet you haven't popularity of the program.
So, the only other thing you can try to do is cut the cost of the program, right?
Or offer more programs that would bring in more revenue.
Right, or maybe.
Find out what the community wants.
Maybe you're not putting out the right product.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, maybe they're not, they're not interested in what you're offering, so they're not participating.
Right. Find out what's the new, latest and greatest.
Now, if I understand right, Cotreville just recently shut down theirs, which may increase somewhat the participation from outside, but, again, we can't, it's getting to the point where we can't continue to pay for, especially when it's not, when the majority of the people are not even from the city. And we can't raise the rates because you'll lose people. I don't know, what else? Do you have any ideas?
So, a few ideas. I was, we were thinking about the field use fee. If we can incorporate field use fees, like they do in East China Park for their fields.
Okay.
Contact the Little League and the Men's League, and let them know that that fee's coming around now, so by next year, when they're ready to get gear up, they'll be aware of it. I know we already did the fee schedule changes, but it's something that could be discussed and get ready for the next time. A hundred bucks a team is what they're paying to play at East China Park, and they have 11 teams, so that, that's some revenue coming in. We have those new concession building over at the King Road Park, plus we have concession building over at Ward Street. And we pay for electricity, for Dyke Security at the Ward Street, the water there. Maybe part of the concessions, a percentage should be coming back to the city to help pay for that.
So, right now, there's no.
We've got other new programs coming in.
We don't charge anything for utility costs?
Not that I know of.
No, we do not.
Well, that's definitely something that should change.
Plus, there's the lighting at the King Road Park, you know?
You think about those big, those lights at night, yeah.
And we put those lights in ourselves, too, so.
So, that, those costs aren't even reflected here.
They're observed in the DPW.
Yeah. We've got to do something, or we can't keep going.
Well, we kind of had these discussions at the budget workshops, and we did, we did give her a year to try to straighten it around.
So, you want me to bring in more revenue, so I can be a cost zero, is what you're saying? My budget's balanced.
Well, we need the parks, well, it was, it's the rec department, it's not the parks and rec. It's the rec department. It needs to be at least, you know, a zero-cost type thing eventually, especially when so many people are participating from outside the city. You know, so I don't know if it's increased marketing, you know, more creative, like you said, we got a baseball park there that could be generating lots of money, and we're not even thinking about it. So, again, I should, we should have had maybe a deeper discussion during the workshops. It's not really fair to you at this point, because we'd already made pretty much our budget decisions. And I'm, and I'm fine with, you know, letting Lynn work on this for the year, and see what she can do, and come up for next year, you know?
I think it's a good challenge to me.
Right. But that's, I mean, that's the truth of it. We're working, we're at a point where every, you know, dollar matters, and if we can't get the rec department to start paying for itself, then it's probably, has a limited future. Commissioner Simpson?
I brought this up during the budget workshops, but I think it bears mentioning, again, people indicated that Cotreville, their whole rec board, I'm not sure what they call the official group, but submitted their letter of resignation. Who indicated years back that they're, I believe it was the Downriver Recreation Group?
Right.
Would there be, do you know enough about Cotreville's situation, or monies that they would have to spend on these types of programs, know if it would be worth pursuing, like, maybe, call it whatever you will, but maybe a Greater Marine City rec program that would incorporate some of their funding to help kind of balance this out? Is that something based on what you know? You know, that's a common thing these days, you know, like the Fire Authority, and these are a lot of other groups. You know, it seems that this is a pretty unique opportunity right now, in the time that that, you know, might be worth at least a handful of phone calls on at some point from somebody to investigate interest, or, do you know anything about that that you can?
I don't know, but it wouldn't hurt to contact them and find out if we can work together to solve it, and give them opportunities to participate with us, or maybe use some of their programs in ours, sorry. I know when Downriver Recreation was in place, it was a collaboration between Clay Township and the School District, and the city of Algonac, and that's how it worked. She used the resources from being in the school, you know, printing paper and things like that, and then Clay Township paid a certain amount of money so that they could have recreation programs, and the city of Algonac paid a certain amount to this Downriver community recreation, and that's how it worked.
It's no longer existing?
It's no longer existing.
No.
Nope. So, the city of Algonac runs their pool. I don't know who or how, but it's still done, through the city of Algonac. But I'll reach out to them and find out.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like they're a heavy participant in this, and, you know, yeah, the individuals pay, but as a municipality, it doesn't appear like they're, they're kind of carrying their weight on that, and they seem to be, you know, and I don't know enough personally about the rec programs. Maybe they have many wonderful rec programs I'm just not aware of, and.
Most of it's summer activities. I don't know if it's anything during the winter, or during the fall. But a lot of times, they would come participate in ours because their mailing address is Marine City, so they assume that they're Marine City residents, they're going to get the resident fee, and then they get here and it's a non-resident fee. But, it's all East China. They're all allowed to come into a program, so. Lisa, did you have?
No, I didn't know if you had any other ideas. I know you were going through the list.
Some of the new revenue's going to come in, is the pickleball. We started a pickleball this fall, and they can't wait to come back next year and start, or start paying. And I know that when I was contacted by St. Clair Rec, she said her pickleball program has worked so well, that it actually helps pay for some of the fees, like her School District Facility Use Fee. So, it could be another big thing coming up, and I'll learn more about the pickleball and continue that, and bring in new programs.
I want to ask, I thought.
Weren't we changing over the lighting system, the LEDs? Or, weren't we changing it over for the parks?
That's downtown. That would be the downtown waterfront parks.
Oh, so.
Not the King Road Park. The King Road Park, they're talking about the lights that are around the men's softball field, for them to be able to play at night. And also at the Ward Castle Field, they have lights for at night.
Okay, because I thought they were changing the lighting over with the parks, all the parks, because that would be a very big cost savings in the long run there. You know, I want to commend you, you got pretty well down on the budgeting. I just thought as an advertising, if you get more people enrolled, you can lower the price, you know, as a slogan, and saying, get your kids or neighbors, or whatever. But, a lot of times, people don't want to know, you know? You try to advertise, but, you know, it's just an excuse, you know, say, well, I didn't know that program exists. But, the smarter people, parents with their children, they, they search out different things. And to me, this is such a plus for our community, to draw other communities over to us, and if we could get more people, there you go. I mean, I don't mind if it's out of, you know, not from our city, just as long as we got the numbers. See what I'm saying? So, what's the difference if it's 75%, but if we got 500 kids, whatever, then they'll cost savings in the long run, so. And I just think it's a splendid opportunity to welcome people to our community that we're a friendly place, and chances are, you know, people might even consider, they, hey, maybe they might want to move to Marine City. So, it's just a plus. But, is there any way, can we check out about the LED lights for the parks?
I'll talk to Mike Ittrich and see what he says, but I know we replaced a lot of the broken lights about five years ago, I think. That we had, maybe four or five of them had broken, we replaced those. So, we're kind of just replacing them as they go along, but what, maybe we can update to LEDs, if that's possible.
It's going to be pretty expensive.
I don't know what.
LEDs often don't have the same output as, you know, the plain lights. You know, it'd be one thing with sidelighting, but light a whole ball field, that's a different type of light altogether.
I think you have to.
Okay.
Just, again, going back to numbers, 43 of our community have taken advantage of the rec department. Forty-three children, and 1975 from the, out of our area. So, we're looking at, you know, over $1,000 per child that we're spending for recreation. And the question is, with things that, there's so much that the schools are doing, that you've got the Little League going, you've got basketball teams, you've got soccer going out of East China, et cetera, et cetera. You know, perhaps we really should look into, you know, subsidizing or working with another community, because it doesn't seem to be a need here.
Well, there's a big need. There's a big, there's a big need for recreation, especially for swim.
Not according to these numbers.
Well, okay, it's been this way for like 20 years, it's always been about the same thing happening. If this was a program, if the department was at cost zero, and would it still be an issue that a big portion of what we have coming in is non-resident? No. So, the issue is just making my budget balance, and it costs zero, and then it really doesn't really matter if it's so much resident, non-resident. If their swim lessons are only offered here, throughout the year, that's where they're going to come, from all over the neighboring townships. And, yeah, I agree with you. I just.
We can't afford to subsidize them.
Right. I heard you.
Commissioner Avery?
Apparently, we are accepting the fact that we will lose money on each transaction, but the plan is to make it up on volume. We need to have something that does bring us up to zero cost, in the sense of, it has to support. We can generate all kinds of things to benefit people outside the city, and they'll probably come.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to make a little point here, and it's kind of a strange one, but we just said that spending $30,000 to provide public television was worth it, and I can tell you, we've got a wide viewership outside of the city. There's a whole lot of people that don't live here that turn it on a regular basis, so, I mean, you know me, I was, we're getting rid of both, but I'm just saying, if one is good, you know, and the other one's a perceived benefit to the community, too, I mean, what makes those two items different? Commissioner Henry?
I guess I think what we should do is give Lynn an opportunity to see if she can't come up with some of these fees and some of these things, and give her an opportunity to see what she can do first.
Well, that's, that's pretty much what we told her at the budget thing, is you've got a year to.
Yes.
Try to work this out.
Several years back, you kind of had an open house about recreation, I'm not sure if it was part of a rec plan update, or something like that, but didn't you have an indication where you literally had no one show up? You invited?
Yeah, right at City Hall, we were trying to discuss having skate park, and what do you want for your rec plan? There were people who were pushing a skate park, and we said, is that really what you want? No, they wanted a splash pad down there.
Yeah.
And a couple times, we have opened the public meetings, and no one would show. We have the Lions Club, we have five. I actually went outside that last time at the City Hall, and went down to the Lighthouse Park, and brought in six people in bathing suits to come to my meeting. I said, come on in, you know, invited these teenagers, and whoever would come in, come on in, we're discussing this, this is going to affect you, you live here. And got the information that way, because just putting a survey on the website, and out to the schools, we weren't getting it back.
It's frustrating, you know, you have open years, and folks don't choose to engage it. That makes it even more difficult.
Over this year, I think putting something up on the website, and getting out to the schools and finding out what's going on, because, to face it, those middle schoolers and high schoolers do have money to spend, and if we can capture some of that, great.
I guess it would be marketing.
Marketing.
I know somebody who's good at marketing, you might want to talk to.
That's where I have a hard time with this. You just stood there and told us that you can't even get people to come to a meeting to propose new projects. How are you going to turn this around?
I'll find a way.
Okay.
Our director is part of Michigan Parks and Recreation Association. In the last two years, I haven't gone to conferences, I've been too involved with it, because I got downsized to two days a week. But, they're a great resource for marketing and learning new programs, and I'm going to be hitting them hard again for new ideas.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks for taking the questions.
Part of our problem, too, unfortunately, for us, is that you have East China offering programs.
Well, yeah, when they're offering their summer rec for free. They are subsidizing the whole thing.
Yeah, but I think that's going to come to a halt once the plant shuts down, because that's going to cripple their budget, from what I understand.
I'm hoping they're enjoying it.
Forty percent of their budget.
Anything else for me?
I saw that in the paper.
Okay, thank you.
So, is that the end of this discussion?
Yep.
All right. So, we're on to item 10C, which is the introduction of ordinance number 2016-4, which is the sidewalk program.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number 201604, in regards to the sidewalk program.
Please, motion of support. Discussion. Commissioner Henry?
Okay, so what's the discussion on the trees? People are going to have to pay, even though it's for these trees?
I haven't had an opportunity to get the attorney and the insurance agent together. Jim Downey was on vacation this week. I did have a lengthy discussion with our insurance agent, Mr. Saff. Pretty much, the responsibility for a sidewalk, whether our tree heaves it or not, ultimately is the responsibility of the city. We do have a clause in our ordinances that can push some of those costs down to the property owner as well. I did a lot of research, looking to see what other communities do. It seems to be something that is a mix throughout the communities, whether they take on the responsibility for sidewalks that are heaved by city trees, or they have the property owner completely cover it, or somewhere in between. Some communities have a 50/50 match, where if it's caused by a city tree, you know, go out, review it, they'll pay half the share. There was actually one community that did something interesting, where, once the sidewalk was replaced, they would, in essence, guarantee it for 10 years not to be heaved by the sidewalk roots. So, there are a lot of different options out there. I think it's something that probably should be included in the language for the program, so that people know either it's their responsibility or not, or somewhere in between. That would be a decision that you guys would want to make. Unfortunately, you know the budget situation, and us really bearing the brunt of those costs, really, at this time, is not feasible. So, that, in essence, would make it very difficult to move forward with the sidewalk program. So, if we went in that direction, we would need to, kind of like the mayor has been saying, we need to work on accumulating money in a capital fund to be able to make the repairs.
This was discussed during the revision of this project, and it came right after the city had notified us that there would be no extra money for anything. So, we decided that since there is no extra money, any tree damage, regardless of how it occurs, would be borne by the property owner, since there is a sidewalk ordinance, and we're just changing it slightly. If we choose to change that in the future, and put budget in for repairing damage, that's fine. But, we don't have it in the budget now, and that's why it wasn't included in here.
Commissioner Henry?
All right. Over the years, I gave a lot of opportunity on how we could have saved money, but nobody wanted to listen to that. But, the issue with this is, I saw a big lawsuit in the city of Warren on this, and the city finally gave in. It went on for 12 years, and it set a precedent, because the city finally gave up. They had the whole community fight the city against the tree issue with the sidewalks. And they finally got, came to an agreement, but that's the problem. But I think, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people that can't afford it, so we're saying, oh, we can't afford it, so we're going to dump it on you. I mean, there are ways to do it. I thought, I think at one time, you told me you were looking into a possible grant. Anything on that?
Unfortunately, because we aren't currently classified as a low-mod community, we don't qualify for it.
And I think some of this, too, from what I read through the other rules, when we get to the point of having to tear up the streets and fix them because of the water sewer lines, some of that road money eventually, for certain things, can also be used for sidewalks.
I wanted to address the Warren lawsuit for a moment. I actually did have a conversation with Steve Saff about that. I actually did have a conversation with, with Steve Saff about that as well. And it's one of these scenarios where, it actually was a court case that started back in two thousand, and it got resolved and settled in two thousand twelve. The issue with that was actually tree roots that had gotten into the pipes and backed up the septic into people's basements. Apparently, there had been some either documentation or discussion at commission level, that there were problem trees and something needed to be done. So, it was something that it was a known problem. Mr. Saff had mentioned something, that they had planted a, like, incorrect type tree or something. So, there were factors that actually led to that lawsuit, above and beyond just a city-owned tree. So, that wasn't something that he said would really set precedence with this.
But it's a known factor here already, that our trees are causing the problem with a lot of people's sidewalks. And foundations, and we haven't gotten into that, because I know, I know people that have had trouble with the trees, and the city basically told them whatever on their foundations, same thing.
He said that there was some extenuating factor that contributed to that lawsuit. It was not just a simple, basic, this is a city tree that we planted.
Well, I know, but it was a lawsuit which cost a lot of money to fight. All I'm saying is, it's kind of a, not a fair deal here, that, you know, the tree goes in and then somebody buys this, and then they're stuck with, you know. They can't, they can't plant a tree without our permission, they can't cut it down with our permission, they, they're not supposed to trim it without our permission. If it does come down, the city has to pay for it and take it down, yet when it does the damage, they gotta pay. You know.
That is the way it works in some places, I know on St. Clair's shores, that's the way it works. And that, that's a community that has quite a bit more resources than us, and that's the way they approach it.
Commissioner Milli.
Yeah, I know Sterling Heights, it's totally banned it, you cannot have a silver maple because of the root system that travels, and it does lift up sidewalks. And Sterling Heights completely banned it. If you had a tree, you had to get rid of it, one way or another, if you planted it, it was totally illegal. And that was one of the biggest problems with that type of tree. I don't know if the tree that you might be talking about, Lisa, is it a silver maple, or do you know what type of tree?
I think most of the ones that are doing most of the damage are big maple trees, and we have, our ordinance now also says that you shouldn't be planting maples anymore. They don't want, that's why the city wants people to ask them first what to plant. I think it lists in ordinance several trees, species, that they don't want you to plant, just because of the damage that they do cause. But I don't know how many people know that, and I don't know how many people ask when they plant a tree, because I see a lot of trees go in, and they're maples.
Anyone else? Commissioner Simpson.
Yeah, it's a tough position to be in, you know, and in one respect, it's, it's the tree issue. We've been talking about sidewalks for over a year now, and this is the best that we've been able to come up with in the financial position that we are. We know that the city has had insurance issues, and they keep going up, and at some point, there's a discussion of, you know, can we carry the same providers? Not even talking about how much the rates are going up, but can we be insurable, because this is an issue? So, I, I've been asking about the trees for a long, long time, over a year, you know, and, and knowing that that's a part of it, but I, you know, I think at a certain point, it's, this is the mechanism that we have to deal with it, that's the best with the tools that we have right now. And I would still think that it seems that it's worth pursuing. Nothing is perfect. I would have an issue if I was a homeowner, but I, I also know that, correct me if I'm wrong, the existing ordinance on the books is that you've been responsible for it. We're not creating a new level of responsibility. Someone that has bought a home in this community, that's the ordinance that existed when they purchased a home, is that correct?
So, why does...
So, we're not, we're not creating an additional burden, you know, so, I, I'm conflicted too, but at some point, we gotta deal with it. And if this, if we've been working on this a year, and this is the best that we've come up with it, with the resources that we have, I still think it's worth, it's worth pursuing. I would agree, it's not perfect, but I, I don't know what else we can do, provided someone doesn't win the mega millions and give us the money.
I would just make the point, it always has been an ordinance, it just hasn't been enforced at all.
Correct.
And by doing it in this way, we're actually trying to save the community money, because it would be a contract given to one cement contractor at a reduced rate, than if you had to go do it each, you know, one little bit at a time. So, by breaking the city into quarters, putting it out for bids, hiring one contractor, it's actually a way to save the homeowners' money.
And there's other municipalities, my parents lived in Macomb Township, they had ash trees that they were responsible for taking down, even though the township planted them, and they had to replace all their sidewalk, and the city just gave them a big fat bill, and there was no reduction of it, and no real ways to mediate that. At least our process has, you know, appeals process is built in, and that, you know, again, it's, it's, as fair as we can make it with the resources we have, and I think that's, shouldn't be overlooked.
Commissioner Leavitt.
There is possibility of looking into some grant money through the community foundation. Laura Scotts had given me some suggestions there, but again, we get into who's eligible, how eligible are you, how, you know, what, where's the poverty line cut off, et cetera. So, you know, there is a way that could be followed, to make some monies available to those who do have a true hardship. But, you know, who's going to, you know, need a committee for that, or, you know, what can we do to get that started?
I think we said we were gonna work on that as they came up. We'd address each individual one as it came up.
Yeah, and a, a tree, you know, itself, it's probably gonna affect two sections of sidewalk at most.
There's some places, some places that the whole...
But the removable, the removal of said tree can be a couple thousand dollars, and some of those big trees too. So, it's not just that, it's solving the actual problem, which is the tree.
You just make the sidewalk go.
There are some that do that, yeah.
Commissioner Don.
Didn't we have implemented that we're gonna have a low interest rate for, for the sidewalks? Didn't we implement?
Well, just so you know, right now, if anybody takes over a three-year, you know, on some of the other ones that we've had, it's been six percent. You know, that's been the interest rate, not necessarily on sidewalks, I'm saying, but on some other programs that we've had, it's been six percent.
So, there's installation payments over time.
Right now, people do have quite a bit of a notice, you know, they, they, we're doing this in zones, and the people that aren't in the first zone have a multi-year notice even, and even by the time we actually get around to it, people have over a year notice. It's very clear in, in the front of your home, you can go out and look, and, you know, plus or minus just a little bit of measurement, you know exactly what your situation is, so there's, you know, there's, it's time to save. I wonder, you have larger municipalities like Detroit, are kind of thinking outside of the box of helping citizens, they partner with these banks and things that are helping them pay for these gap loans to, to do things. I know we have a lot of chain banks, which aren't famous for working with, with cities, but I wonder if there's, you know, a banking institution nearby that might be worth partnering, not necessarily with the city, because we have no money to give for that, but might be worth creating a program for individuals that might have to take a low-interest loan to pay for these types of things, and, you know, just, you know, if the city might be able to spearhead something like that, to make an arrangement with a bank, that those that have this need can be, you know, partnered with at, at a low interest or something, under community promotions for that bank. I know, you know, the chain banks, that may be a hard one, there might be a credit union or, or something. I don't know, it seems, you know, on a bigger scale that works, it would be a nice thing that some of these banks in town that, you know, house all the money from the communities and, and receive that, maybe that's a way that they could help give back. I, I don't know the reality of that, but that might be worth pursuing.
You might, you might even be able to do a loan over ransom tip or something. So, that might be possible.
Commissioner Avery.
Along this line, I've lived here for ten years. I have a large maple tree on the parkway. I have twice had to have my sewer pipe routed out because of roots. It has damaged the sidewalk, it, sidewalk has to be there. It's dropped branch off onto a vehicle in my driveway, which then got to the house too, but not damaging it. I remember my late mother, who had a rough upbringing during the depression, had told me several times that nobody ever said life was gonna be easy and fair. This is what we have only in a house. We have maintenance, I have an older home. There's all kind of things that come up that you say, oh, I don't wanna spend that now. We choose to have houses in the city, and this is, this is part of the cost.
I guess the only problem I have with that same is that the homeowner doesn't, can't cut that tree down, without the city approving, so if it's a problem, tree damaging your sidewalks and sewers, you...
Have we, have we ever denied anyone cutting the tree down? That has approached us? We have, they need our permission, but have we ever said no when I've been...
I wouldn't know.
There's a couple homes right on, on Parker Street, that have planted two little new maple trees right out in front.
And that's why I say, people don't understand, they have to check, but I know over by us, when, when we had a bad one over here, we just called and they took it down.
Yeah.
If you want them down, normally, they've been taken down.
Well...
And usually, they're in bad shape when most people want them down, so...
So, you should get your tree cut down. It's causing lots of trouble.
It would've saved me some money, but not the cost of pulling it down, and I wasn't going to expect the city to pay for it right at that point. We know how expensive tree removal was two years ago, when the storm came through. That's a different situation, because it creates public inconvenience and danger when it falls on the streets and things.
Do we have a motion yet?
There's a bunch of me just to introduce the sidewalk.
Right. Motion to move forward.
Yeah, so, I'd agree with that, if everybody's done, said all their points, we'd move this to a vote. You guys want a roll call, or just...
Just an introduction.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, next time it comes around, it'll be for adoption.
Yeah.
Item ten D, introduction of ordinance number two zero one six dash zero five, water and sewer rates.
I'd like to introduce ordinance number two zero one six oh five, in regards to water and sewer rates.
Please, the motion is support, any discussion? Commissioner Henry.
So, I guess I didn't look at, is this the...
Four cents and three cents, or whatever, between the two?
It's just on your water and sewer usage rates, nothing else changed on all the other fees.
And I know there were some issues with some of the water bills, is that what this is to cover, or? I mean, why such a, why such a small amount, I guess is what I'm looking at all of a sudden.
Well, because I was able to balance the budget, and we discussed that during the budget workshops, that part of the reason is that there was like at least a thirty-five thousand dollar bill that we were paying for the water tower that we no longer have to pay. It was on a, you know, a scheduled number of years, that's reduction, just reduction in costs, and that, you know, we were able to balance the budget without having to raise them that, that much.
Well, the water tower maintenance program was the major thing. That's why, such a reduced rate.
Right. Okay, but recently, there were some issues, I talked to you, Elaine, because there was some issues with some of the water bills that weren't done right, or there was an issue with...
Between the metering system and the BSNA system? What was that all about?
That's something that was in our last audit report, that when we had an audit done, there were some inconsistencies. This had to do with the Badger meter, like data entry type stuff.
The test codes that you put into BSNA.
So, we've been just going through and, and double checking all the accounts, and just fixing some inconsistencies.
So, a lot of them went up though, because of that, right? Because we weren't charging enough?
Some did, yeah.
Okay.
Not all of them.
Yeah, so, we're just working on that.
Was there, you know what kind of volume you were talking, amount-wise, total?
We won't know until later in the year, because they're still working on it. In fact, we had a meeting with the city auditor today, to show him, to discuss this with him, and during that meeting, we have set up new policies and procedures to avoid this happening in the future, that, so this isn't going to happen. The actual accounts, which there's about seventeen hundred accounts, they were physically looked at by both the accounting clerk and the DPW director. So, they were all reviewed. We talked to BSNA today, we can run reports that the auditors are requesting. They brought it to our attention during that last year, and that's what this all, how this all developed, reviewing this.
This doesn't have anything to do with that. This is, these are the rates that we agreed to at the budget workshop.
I understand it, I'm just kinda concerned how much money...
Well, I, I just wanna make sure the people understand that, that this is, this is something that we worked out in our budget. This is our budget, this is an additional cost because of error.
No, and that's not why the rates were so low, because we weren't even aware of any of this until after the budget was already calculated.
And then, anybody who has this issue is getting a letter to notify them.
They received a letter with their buildings, and actually, we discussed that today, and there was not a single person that approached us after we mailed the letter out today.
More for the public, so that they know, in case they get one.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to item ten E, which is the waived permit fees on electrical work at the city offices.
I make a motion that we waive the electric permit fee in the amount of sixty, five dollars for the city offices.
Motion is support, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fee's been waived. Moving on to item ten F, which is waived permit fees for the library gazebo.
Make a motion to waive the building permit fee in the amount of seventy-eight dollars for the gazebo located at Marine City Library.
Support, motion is support, any questions on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Make the board. Moving on to item ten G, which is board appointments. So, I guess we'll take these one at a time.
Just a reminder, you have one additional for the library.
Yeah, you have to add.
That was added tonight, I don't know if you saw it.
The...
Linda Gabler.
Yeah, I, I saw it. That's for the planning commission.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and she's already on the planning commission.
Okay, so just...
So, the first one is by recommendation of the mayor, approved by the commission, that's for the planning commission, so we'll do these one at a time. I'm gonna recommend Keith Jenkins be reinstated.
You need support for that?
Yep.
Support.
Motion is support, any discussion on Mr. Jenkins? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Moving on to the second one, I'd like to recommend Grant Allen. Give you a little background of him, he was the regional director for a major charity, and he was in charge of five thousand employees, and he was responsible for all building projects. So, I think he had a budget of close to a billion dollars, that he was working with through Salvation Army. So, I think he'd be an excellent person for this, for the planning commission, so I'm recommending him.
Support.
Any discussion on Mr. Allen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Allen, you'll actually have something to do now. Then, the third one I'd like to recommend for the planning commission would be Linda Gabler. She's already been serving, and she would like to continue to do so.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to tax finance authority. Again, that's the recommendation by the mayor, approved by the commission. Scott Tisdale's been serving for quite a while, and he wants to continue to do so, and I would like to recommend him for that position.
Support.
Any discussion on Mr. Tisdale? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Scott, you've been doing that for a long time. Moving on to the historical commission, we have one, Phil, we have Grant Allen and Darlene Jarvis, I'm gonna just use the last name, last part of my name. This one is by the commission. Somebody would like to make a recommendation?
I'd like to nominate Darlene, it's mainly DeFars.
Yeah. Is there support for that? Support? All right, we have motion is support, any discussion on this appointment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so she's going to be joining that board. Opposed? All right. So she's going to be joining that board. Thank you very much for your application. Moving on to the zoning board of appeals. We have two appointments and we have, for two, appointment for two alternates. And we have Darlene Jarvis volunteering for that again.
Isn't she on there already? Isn't that a reappointment?
Board review.
Oh, board review. Oh, okay.
That's the CBA.
Trying to keep them all straight.
Yeah.
Let's tell you who.
We have no existing policies against someone serving on the same board, uh, to separate boards or anything like that?
No, no, there's no policy against it.
Support.
Let me know if we do. I can get off one of them.
No, no, there's a difference between a commission delegate and someone that's on that board. Nice try, though. Nice try.
All right.
Because I'm in the same boat.
You made a motion for her?
Uh, I did not, but I would. You know, that's our only applicant that we have for that. You know, someone that's-
It's an alternate position anyway, so we're grateful.
And I know that board's had a lot of issues with getting a quorum. And that's an important thing when the city has to pay to notify people. And you have people that are wanting to improve their businesses or homes. They need to move that along.
Just happy to see so many people throwing out applications.
Yep.
It's a treat. Somebody we have support? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is Marine City Fire Authority. This is actually a commission appointment. This is for a commission representative. Lisa Hendrick's been doing it for quite a while. She's volunteering to do it again.
Yeah. Support.
I didn't make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that Lisa Hendrick can be appointed to represent the commission on the Marine City Fire Authority.
Support that.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the Marine City Fire Authority. We have one appointment. This is a reappointment, actually, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Mark Posey.
He's up for reappointment.
He's a member at large. We have to do it every year, yes.
Make a motion to appoint Mark Posey on Marine City Fire Authority.
I'll support that.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Moving on to the library board. We have one appointment. We have Sharon Harwick.
I'd like to appoint Shannon Harwick to the library board.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That does it for the board appointments. And again, I'd like to thank everyone that applied. It's great to see so many volunteers.
I have a question for the city manager. Do we have any existing open alternatives or board positions available still for anyone that might still be interested in applying? Or does that take care of everybody?
Chris is the one that generally keeps that list. I don't know if we have it updated or not.
Yeah, for the zoning board of appeals, we need one more alternate. And then for the dangerous building board, we need an architect or a, I think we have enough contractors to need an architect.
Okay. They have to hold that credential?
Maybe, I think it was something along that line. It's a field looking at.
All right, so we're done? All right, moving on to item 10H, which is appoint election commission representative. I think, Terry, you've done that last two times. Somebody else like to volunteer? Any chance, or you want to keep doing it?
I'll do it.
Okay. We got to mark. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll go to appoint Terry.
I'll also support that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Quick, before he changes his name.
Moving on to added agenda item 10I, which is waive permit fees for the beach pavilion project.
Make a motion to waive the permit fees for the beach pavilion project.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion on that?
Quick question. So has this gone through?
They came to the planning commission meeting that we hosted this week. We approved the conceptual drawings for that day. So they have some due diligence to come in front of the ZBA because of some setback in distances, concerns. And they would have to come back to the PC and then come back to the city commission, of course, for ultimate approval on that. But, yeah, they, we finally received some conceptual drawings and we were able to talk through. They've amended that site plan and made quite a few adjustments.
That's the main reason for this tonight, because it's kind of expensive going to the board of appeals. And since it's a donation to the city.
Yeah.
We should make it as easy as possible.
Yeah, I was just curious where it was at in the process.
Yeah, we, this Monday.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fee's been waived. Moving on to item 11A, which is financial business, budget amendments.
Okay, what I would like you to do is go right to, the first part of the budget amendments is your resolution. And I would prefer that you just go right to the explanation page because in that way, we can go through each one that'll explain to get to that bottom number. So it'll say budget amendments explanation right on the top. And it's right after the signature page. Well, it's within that area, but there's-
There's a bunch of them.
Okay. I'll tell you what number. Hold on.
Four, five, six, the offset.
It's on the page.
It's on page, it's on page 84. They don't have pages.
No.
I was going to do.
This minute, I'll tell you.
Wow, you know, and I'd like to, at this point, say I've been paperless now for two meetings. And I encourage my fellow commissioners to do the same thing at some point.
I ate from the best.
Just try to get this in while they scramble through their papers. I've already made it to the page.
It'll be the ninth change if you want to know where it is, but the explanation page. It'll have general fund revenue, have account number, description, original budget change, new budget, and explanation. That's your column that you're going to be looking at.
It's like eight from the, or the ninth.
Page eight.
All right, you can go.
All right.
So when you're ready, tell me.
Go ahead.
Okay, the first one is general fund. And in there, the total revenues, and when you see original budget, that's not the total budget. That's only those accounts that this affects, okay? Was 113,000. The changes are 74,015. An increase in revenues, so in those particular accounts as a net. And then a new budget increase of 187,015. From that, licenses increased by 3,825. Again, if you look at the explanation, I mean, they're pretty self-explanatory in here. It's just additional revenue. I mean, when we're doing the budget, you never know per se. Like, this next time, we put a fee in there, you know, for the 16, 17 budgets. So it'll be maybe, and that is not in this. This is just additional revenue of your initial business licenses. And you have all talked about how the town is increasing in businesses and stuff. This is, this is one of the things that would go up as a result of that, is when you have new businesses in here, they have to file for an initial business license. And then you get your revenue that way. Permits is, we've seen an increase in permits. You know, when the economy turns around, you know, you start seeing additional permits. And I know several of you have been on here for a long time. You know, I'm always very conservative when I calculate the budget for revenues. And it's only because I don't want to anticipate more money than what we're going to get in. The next one is your facade program, the phase three. This is your grant revenue for the Snug Theater. And if you look a few lines down, you'll see the local source. That was what the property owner had to contribute. And the offsetting expenditure will be down farther in the special projects. So there was no cost to the city. This was an in and outs, offsetting revenue. Now, those salvage recertification fees is the fees that are collected, where these inspectors go out. They do inspections on cars and then totaled. And to be able to get a title, they have to get this, this recertification. And then the offsetting entry would be in the expenditure. The city receives 10% of the revenue. And it's, you know, they anticipated 80,000. The PD is the one that came up with the figure. And I will tell you that we've dropped out drastically. We don't have a lot of the revenue coming in that way. And then I'll just bring it up to you today, is when we met with the auditor's day, that he did mention about these recertification fees. They are putting a lot more restrictions on there. We're going to do some changes in there so that we have a better control of the paperwork coming in and going out of the office. So miscellaneous revenue, that would be a revenue that we're receiving for site plan reviews and stuff. That's the reason this increases in here is because the expense comes out of professional services in the community economic development department. And this is offsetting revenue. I already went over the local source. We had a donation for park benches. There's actually one we just received recently. There's going to be two new benches going down at the beach. They pay for the total cost of this. The city, you know, the city puts like the foundation in, but the pole bench and everything they put in. An insurance settlement, this was for the Tahoe accident. And part of the revenue came in, in the 15, 16 year. And this is in the, excuse me, 14, 15 year. And this is the portion that came in the 15, 16 year. So when you get down to the police department, you're going to see the total cost because the actual repair was done in the 15, 16 year. Then next, that's done with the revenues. Then we'll go down to expenditures under the police. I just explained to you about the Tahoe. That increase of 11,900 was repairs for the Tahoe. And the reason we don't see, there was a $1,000 deductible that was across the city. And then partial revenue was received in the prior fiscal year. The fire authority, and we, I had mentioned this during the budget workshops, is that there was a slight increase from what we budgeted because we had received the preliminary budget prior to receiving the final budget and was approved. So after they did their final budget, we had an additional 860. Community economic development is professional services. I just explained to you about that. That would be anybody that's bringing in this for a site plan review or anything like that. Advertising, this would be also is offset in the revenue part. And that's when people apply for variances or they have to send out, no, this is certified, I mean, excuse me, notices to the property owners. And it also has to be advertised. The advertisement comes into this category here. We have to advertise that when you have your public hearings and so forth, right? Okay. And insurance and benefits, the workers' comp, this was an additional expense not anticipated during budget process. It wasn't, had nothing to do with increase in employees or anything like that. It was just, I, when I do it, I have to kind of guess sometimes. And depending on what the year entails, lots of times, most of the work could be, were in water and sewer the year before. So the burden was placed on the water and sewer fund. And then this particular fiscal year, a lot of the work that the employees were doing was actually in the general fund. So the cost is accrued here. Liability insurance, this was additional expense for claim deductibles that were not budgeted. I did budget for some of it, some of the claim deductibles. But we had, one of them alone was a $5,000 deductible that we had to pay on an insurance settlement. The last, I think, department is your special projects. That salvage vehicle inspection fee, that would be the 90% of the hundred, of the revenues that we receive, that we pay to the inspector. Hydrant rental, I missed this when we were doing the budget process. This is funds that we send over to the water and sewer fund from the general fund. And it's just, it's, it's just a number. I mean, it's not anything that we physically keep tracked of. And then the facade program, phase three, that's the total expense with the offsetting revenue, total offsetting revenue. So if you turn the next page, you will see what that changed the budget from. The amended budget was a net of revenue of 435. This changed, these changes of the expenditures exceeded the revenue change by 12,280 with a deficit then of 11,845. And then you'll see what the estimated year-end fund balance is. Now, this fund balance does also include some of the designated funds that we have. It's not just operating fund balance. And as I say, every year is, it may show this on the paper, but when it comes down to it after the fiscal year ends, it's never going to, it never generally is the deficit. And the one thing is, is that when I review our expenditures and revenues, I look at only the key ones that I need, that I have concern over, that I'm afraid, because we adopt a budget by the department. So if I see like a department's getting very close at the end of the year of their percentage that they're supposed to do, I'm going to review those accounts and increase it. Doesn't mean that the other accounts that are going to spend that much. It's just I need to be prepared because we're not supposed to exceed our budget amount. So that's why you'll see some of these. But overall, I don't anticipate that type of a deficit at year-end. Okay, the next one, is there any questions on general fund before we go through or? Next is your local street expenditures. And this is under the drains and storm sewers department. There was an additional expense, not, you know, we have these drain tax assessments that are put on our, that the county does. It's from the St. Clark County Drain Commission. And the property owners that abut these drains get assessed, as well as the city at large. Well, I was not aware at the time when they were doing this, and neither was Mike, that there was going to be an assessment. They sent me that paperwork, so I would be prepared for future years. But this was a new assessment that I was not aware that was coming through. And this was the city's portion of it. So as a result, our net of rep, we had adopted a budget with 26,345 deficit. This change of 4,700 in expenditures increases the deficit of 31,000 to 31,45. But again, this is not concerned because remember, your street funds, yes, we want to put money away for a rainy day, but you have to remember that. It's not like we have to have a set fund balance per se for the other ones, because you're going to increase these funds to save for improvements in the future. And then once you do that, then you spend it, then you have to rebuild it. Next is your TIP-01 fund expenditures. In TIP-01, under general supply, they had approved an additional expense for the flag poles, which, and flags that were not anticipated during the budget process. And under community promotion, they were, they approved those startup grants. I'm not saying we're going to have an additional grants in there, but I want to be sure, sure, you know, I mean, they, there is a possibility someone could submit something, they approve it within the next couple of weeks. So I just want to be prepared for that and not go over. The budget overall for the expenditures was at 98.5%. And I still had like three weeks left in the month of June. And I, that's too close for me. So as a result, the budget was at 5,065 deficit. I added an additional 5,450 with a cumulative deficit of 10,515. But still, you're okay because you, you still got your fund balance of 16,592. Next is your drug law enforcement fund expenditures. When we did the prior budget amendments, I had forgotten that the car was in this. And I completely zeroed out the budget that was there with the car and forgot that there was an office computer for the police department purchased with those funds that's used for drug law enforcement. So unfortunately, I had to make it right. And that's what I'm doing right here. But when we did a budget prior, when we did all those police department changes, I had removed the total capital outlay. And I should have left 1,460 in there. The revenues were exceeding the expenditures by 1,900. Changing this with, this expenditure of 1460 still left you with a surplus of The Miller Memorial Library Fund, we touched on this during budget workshops. I had said that before the end of the fiscal year, that the funds are going to be used. And that starting in July of 2016, there will not be any more funds left in this. And so eventually, this fund will go away. And that's what's happened in this 16, 17 budget year. So the capital outlay was for the air conditioner shrubs replaced at the library. The air conditioner's already been done. And the shrubs will be replaced before the end of the fiscal year. So that will close this fund. The last one is your water sewer fund expenditures. It's just under system maintenance for the wastewater treatment, you know, wastewater treatment. Wages were increased. This is when we did the budget this year, Mike actually sat with me and kind of went over the wages. Instead of in the past, I always did it on my, by myself. And as a result, by him knowing a little bit more now what's going on, he can anticipate what the wages should be. So ultimately, I did not put enough funds there when we did the budget for the 15, 16 budget year. So we have an increase of 4,500, which also results, the FICA employer goes in there, in equipment maintenance, increased 400 due to camel truck repairs. And then the professional services SAW grant is, the total expenditure was put in capital outlay. And then I broke it down between professional services, what Tetra Tech's doing right now. So all I did is I reduced the capital outlay and increased the professional services for the SAW grant. So that's just a wash right there. So bottom line is, net of revenue over expenditures is 46- So bottom line is, net of revenue over expenditures is $46,965. We reduced that surplus by $5,245 with still a surplus of $41,720 in the water and sewer The last one is the cemetery trust fund revenue. And what happens is, is we transfer the perpetual care bank trust interest over to the cemetery fund. Well, we've received a little bit extra interest this year than we had in prior years. So all it is, is you show the revenue coming in and you show it going out. There's no net increase in revenue or a decrease, you know, a decrease. It's, it nets out right there. So, any questions? This actually was probably, I told Elaine, one of my smallest end-of-the-year budget amendments we've ever had. So, that's good on my side.
Because we don't have any money.
Or else we're just all monitoring it very closely.
Make a motion to approve budget amendment.
Support. Motion to support. Is this going to be a roll call? Is this spending, no, this is, we don't approve it? Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to item 11B, fund transfer resolutions.
Make a motion to approve the fund transfer resolutions as presented.
Support. Do we have to do these one at a time, or can we do them in mass?
Yes. Because they're each a separate resolution.
All right.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 0212016 to approve the fund transfer from general fund to cemetery fund.
Motion to support. Any discussion?
You add the amount, I think we're supposed to.
$14,000. So you've included the amount.
You want me to redo it?
No, we're fine.
Okay. Just include the 14.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to the cemetery trust fund.
Make a motion to approve the cemetery trust fund perpetual care, resolution number 0222016 at $26.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to water sewer fund special assessment fund.
Make a motion to approve the water sewer fund special assessment fund of $1,530. Resolution number 0232016.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And the last one is general fund to water sewer fund.
Make a motion to approve transfer from the general fund to the water sewer fund of $10,000, which is resolution 0242016.
Support. Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And at the very bottom, Mary Ellen says thank you.
I make a motion.
You see all this stuff that's on here? I did that all in a day pretty much, didn't I? So I had to rush through and get it all done.
Moving on to item 11C, which is disbursements including payroll.
Make a motion to approve disbursements including payroll in the amount of $154,079.13.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lovett.
Yes.
Commissioner Malley.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Your contestants.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Thank you, board. Moving on to 11D, preliminary financial reports.
I move to approve the preliminary financial reports as presented.
Support. Motion to support. Any questions or comments on the financial? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's been approved. Moving on to item 11E, special assessment outstanding invoices added to the tax rule resolution.
Make a motion to approve special assessment for delinquent accounts related with property cleanup invoices, water sewer construction, and water sewer accounts.
The motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Then to item 11F, which is resolution number 025-2016. To, go ahead.
I would say make a motion, a motion to approve resolution number 025216, changing the millage rate from 16.8707 to 16.869 due to the Headley rollback factor of .9999.
Motion to support. Would you like to just give us a little explanation?
Yes. When I did the budget resolution, I've always done it that way. I've always included the millage rate in there. And the millage rates, actually, the equalization director is the one that will always provide me with rollback factor. Well, I didn't feel that we'd have a rollback factor because there was very, hardly any significant change in our value. So I just felt it would be a one again, like it has been for the last several years. And so we adopted this on May 19th. Well, on May 20th, he did the millage reduction fraction computation. That's what that last sheet is there, of the entire county. And he told me it was .999. And I was like, oh. So I knew I had to change this because we had adopted it at 16.8707. Bottom line is, it makes a difference of $154 in tax dollars. That's it. So I mean, it's not affecting the budget to where we need to be concerned or anything like that. I am going to change the procedure. I talked it over with Elaine, because every year, and actually, May 20th is early for him, usually I have to wait until the end of May before he will tell me what the factor is. So what I'm going to do next year is, we always have to adopt the budget at the second meeting in May. So we will do that, and it is not required that I have to have that millage in this resolution for the budget. Then at this second meeting in June, I'll bring you the L4029, which I fill out anyways, and that's just telling you what the millage rate is, and it gives you the factor and everything. And to tell you honestly, most communities do it that way. They do the L4029. They don't necessarily have it in their resolution for their budget. And this way, it would, this would never happen. I mean, this, in all the years that I've done this, in the 28 years I've done this, this has never happened to me. So needless to say, I was quite upset about it, but there was nothing I could do about it. And I talked to the auditor. I mean, I knew I had to do it, and I really wanted it done, and that's why I asked to have it added, because I sent out tax bills July 1st. It wasn't required that I had to have this done. You know, I would have had to send the bills out. You could have done it in July. But for me, security reasons, I wanted it done now, so it was done before I did my tax bills.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is passed. City manager report.
Over the last week or so, I've been working on some personnel issues and dealing with trying to update the union contract, which eventually will come to this board. Also been working on writing RFPs, getting some out. And I also have been working with the attorney regarding the comments that we received from a resident about the Riverview easement problem. I did get another letter from her as well. I'm working with Jim Downey, trying to figure out what options we have. One thing of importance to note is that these are for water access to people, so we can't really limit it in that regard. The only thing that Jim Downey did point out from the information that the resident had provided is that we could have assigned posting no alcoholic beverages, a lot of the other suggestions that she had. We really can't prohibit it because it is public property. But I'm going to continue working with Jim Downey on this and see if there is some, something more that we can do.
Barbecues.
We can't prohibit it based upon what, what Jim Downey has said, but I think I really need to work with him and, and look at the ordinances and, and information that we have available to us.
Ordnances against open fires.
I'll need to work with Jim Downey.
We have recreational fires now, so. But that sheet I gave you too, that specified that, I found a sheet that this, kind of like the state put together for those type of street ends, and they said it basically is strictly for access to the water. So for a kayak or swimming or fishing or something like that, but you're not supposed to use it for all the other activities. That's what it claimed.
That's all I have.
Why don't we start with the...
I got one for her on the...
Go ahead.
The navigation lights on the Biff Bridge are out on the south side. I got a report for that. Give that one to you.
I think we'll start with Mr. H. I don't think I ever started with him.
The wrong end of the alphabet for you. All right, maybe to clarify, just, or explain what happened with the tree damage that was near, well, it was on Elizabeth Street just north of Westminster. A tree on private property had a large limb fall off and straddled a truck that is parked. It's been there for some time. The resident lives right across from where it's parked, so he's parking on the southbound side of the street. He lives on the northbound side. There was minor damage to his truck, the way the tree fell. The branches supported it pretty much, it didn't crush the cab. Anyway, the city was there, very quickly, fire, police, DPW. They cut the tree apart to get it off of the street, and then it was mentioned that that's private tree, private property, so it was just put there. The resident worked very quickly, and in several days, it's, all the debris is gone. I saw there was an insurance adjuster out by the truck to look at the damage, so I, I think everything was handled very nicely in that area, and it was fortunate that there was not more damage. That was in that large windstorm Sunday a week ago. Think that's all I've got at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hadder.
I don't have anything tonight.
Ms. Lovett.
Shortly. First of all, I just want to comment on how awesome it is when a community gets together and does a project such as the work done to improve the debris, to improve the beach has greatly enhanced our community, and not only by seeing the project completed, but to so many helping hands, but it's also providing a safe environment that's being generated for citizens of Marine City who go to the beach. So, you know, again, it's just wonderful to see people come together for a common cause and a positive endeavor and see what can be accomplished. So, and thank you to those who spearheaded that project. In addition, the horse-drawn wagon rides are going to be a real interesting addition. We're kind of going back, going up to a Methnol Island kind of tradition, but I'm looking forward to that, bringing something very unique to the city. I also want to bring you up to date on the gravel yard. I did pursue that. I spoke with the St. Clair County Road Commission, I spoke with M.D. and our county commissioner, Bill Greitak. Many thanks to Bill, who has stayed on this task with me. The gravel yard is now putting calcium chloride down and have broomed and swept the area and will continue to do that. And thanks to Mike Ittrich for following through on that as well. Also was brought to my attention that there are grooves in the pavement coming as they make that corner, those trucks making that corner from Charter, from Parker onto Charter and again from Charter onto King. The weight of those trucks with that, I believe, next Saturday will be asphalted and they're coming to fix that. So you may have a little detours on Saturday. They're trying to do one on Saturday, or the Saturday when they get the asphalt, because the trucks aren't running, then it'd be a little difficult to stop the trucks. And this is only going to last as long as they, they're working on the I-69. So this is not, you know, a two-year project or anything like that, but I do want you to know that something was being done. Okay, and again, as I said, Mike Ittrich has been staying on top of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Just a quick thank you to all the people that worked on the beach project and the funding involved. That's terrific news, and excited to hear about pumpkins and popcorn coming up in October. Thank you.
Ms. Malley.
Yeah, a couple of things I did want to say. Lynn?
I don't see her here, but she is doing a wonderful job with the Parks and Recs. It's an honor to have you as a staff member. And also, I want to say, Paul, you do an excellent job running the Comcast. You make St. Clair County look prestigious, and we need that. And it's a good outlook for our community, and I want to say thank you very much. And also, the Fourth of July is coming up, and we have a cancellation, so we won't be at the next meeting in July. So I want to say everybody have a safe holiday and be mindful when you're using fireworks or firecrackers that things do happen, and it's good to have parent supervision sometimes to overlook. Sometimes as a, as a kid or a teenager, we take things for granted, you know, you know something's going to explode, and it's fun and games, but sometimes it goes the wrong way, and things can happen. The other thing I did want to say, tribute to Bill, he made a comment about different things in my yard. Well, yeah, I've been, I'm a contractor, I do have different equipment in my yard, and I do have it underway, that I am going to be putting up a shed, and I want to do it in good taste, and I got all approval from the city and everything, so I will have all my equipment hidden. And also, I do collect different antiques. My house is more of a museum, and I'll be displaying more of my stuff around my house, and it'd be an attribute where people would want to look in my yard. I'm very mindful that I, you know, if something doesn't look right, is in poor taste, I'm very mindful, because I don't want to bring down the neighborhood, nor would I want my neighbor to bring down my neighborhood if something is not right. But there's just different things that have been underway for me, and I've been busy. And sometimes when you're by yourself and you're doing a lot of things on your own, it just takes time. And bear with me, things will start looking a lot nicer, and I just wanted to make that comment to you, Bill. So anyhow, oh, Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to remind individuals that, who might be watching that don't follow these types of calendars, that school's out after the end of this week, so folks can maybe just pay a little extra attention to kids on the sidewalk and crossing streets that might not be paying great attention themselves. You know, we have a wonderful walkable community. The downside to that is you get a lot of people that might be out and about in close proximity to parked cars and, and streets and those types of things, and just, you know, an extra set of eyes, an extra half a second to look, you know, in another direction again, might go a long way with preventing terrible tragedies.
Just say happy Fourth of July, be safe, be respectful of your neighbors. Surprisingly, I pretty much agreed with what Mr. Haas had to say, and I do think we need to go after blight. I've been talking to our city manager about that and the rentals. I'd like Tifa to start focusing on the neighborhoods, and maybe can do a little work on that, maybe do some housing rehab, make them available to first-time homebuyers, or work on loan interest loans, you know, some neighborhood revitalization programs. I think that'd be an excellent use of our Tifa money. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
[inaudible].